All right, so we're going to start on Bill twenty one dash zero zero one five or LO twenty one dash zero zero one five Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Staten Operations for the purpose of requesting the Fire Chief to present information to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. This bill was introduced on October fourth, two thousand and twenty one, and it was sponsored by myself, Councilman Conway. Now, once again, this is really an opportunity. I really appreciate our first hearing on this where we started to dive into what we were seeing operationally and some of the public health implications that sort of seeded some of the operational problems that we're seeing across the department. So really looking forward to jumping into that conversation. I understand the agency's got a presentation that we're going to walk through. I asked that we had an opportunity to review that presentation, and I'd like to, if we could focus on the first eight slides before we open up for questions, because I think that's an apt opportunity for folks to understand the neighborhood and top ten posts, which excuse me, top ten box areas before we jump into the EMS call volume. With that, I'm going to hand off to the Fire Department.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much, Councilmembers. Thank you as well. I have with me Chief Matts and our medical director, Dr. Ben Lawner, and I'd like, they're going to outline the presentation. Chief Matts, please.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Could I be elevated to share the presentation, please? Oh, you did. Wait just one second. Can everyone see that okay? No?
No, we can't now. It looks like it's coming up. There we go. Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you. Just one second here. Okay, Chairman Conway, members of the City Council, good afternoon. For the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Deputy Chief of EMS. I'm also joined today by my esteemed colleague, Dr. Lawner, would you like to introduce yourself? I guess Dr. Lawner's not coming through?
No, I'm here. Actually, I'm impaired about them, but I'm here, Chief Matts.
You can introduce yourself for the chair for the record, sir.
Dr. Ben Lawner, one of the medical directors for the City Fire Department, with some pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Great, so I'm just going to go ahead and start through like we did the last time, just walk through the top neighborhoods. I guess you said you want to go through all eight slides first, Mr. Chair, and then we'll stop and talk for questions, or you want to do it that way?
Yeah, if we can get through the box, the box areas, and then the top neighborhoods, I think it'll help give us a little context before we jump in the questions.
Sure, so I'm just going to read for everyone's identification. Our top box in the last quarter, understand this is the last quarter of two thousand and twenty one, was box thirty three fifty. They had a hundred, three hundred and forty-five incidents, and those neighborhoods within that box area encompass McCallery Park at a hundred and sixty-two incidents, Milton Monford at a hundred and thirteen, followed by Care, Patterson Place, Madison East End, and then Middle East. The next box area that had our top ten areas was box area fifty-one dash one that totaled three hundred incidents. The neighborhoods within that box assignment, and I would like to point out, some of the boxes do crisscross, you'll see the names appear multiple times. Elwood Park and Monument at two hundred and three incidents, Baltimore Highlands at forty-five incidents, and then they were followed by Patterson Park Neighborhood, Orangeville, Orangeville Industrial Area, and Madison East End. The next area in sequence would be box area thirteen dash seventy, which encompassed two hundred and eighty incidents in fourth quarter, and those neighborhoods in that area were Upton at two hundred and one incidents, Drew Heights at thirty-nine, and then they were followed by Madison Park, and then San Town Winchester. The fourth highest number of EMS calls with box area fourteen dash fifty at two hundred and seventy-eight incidents, and that's Carrollton Ridge at two hundred and thirty-one, and then New Southwest Montclair at forty-seven. Fifth would be box area, which is really northwest Baltimore area, which would be forty-five dash forty, and then encompassed two hundred and fifty-four incidents, and those neighborhoods were Levendale at two hundred and six, followed by Mount Washington at forty-four, and then Cold Spring with four. The sixth box in sequence would be box area twenty-three dash one. They had three, two hundred and thirty-five incidents in this box area, and those neighborhoods included downtown at two hundred and fourteen incidents, downtown west at eleven incidents, and then the inner harbor itself at ten. The seventh area with the highest number of EMS incidents would be box area thirteen dash forty, and then encompassed two hundred and thirty incidents in those neighborhoods. Once again, seems similar to the other ones we did with thirteen, which is Upton at a hundred and ninety-eight incidents, Madison Park at twenty-eight, and then they were followed by Bolton Hill and then Heritage Crossing. The eighth would be box area twenty-seven dash thirty, which included two hundred and thirty incidents, and that neighborhood was just one neighborhood, and that would be Frankfurt. The last two neighborhoods, or last two box assignments, would be box area thirteen dash ten at two hundred and twenty-six incidents, and those neighborhoods were Bolton Hill at one hundred and forty-three incidents, Drew Heights, and then Madison Park. The last box assignments would be box area six dash sixty-two, which is really around the Old Town area, and that encompassed two hundred and twenty-five incidents, and those neighborhoods included downtown at a hundred and thirty-eight, and then Mount Vernon at Trying to see what slide is that, you want me to go a little bit further here, sir? Box five, okay.
Yeah, yeah, if, I think it's the slide after the map. We can stop after that.
Okay, so what we did on this is we laid over that information we had put down the first time when we did the entire fiscal year, and we laid down the quarter four numbers along with the fiscal year totals or incidents. And as you could see for the quarter, and to be honest with you, a lot of these numbers seem pretty consistent, and about a quarter of those numbers downtown accounts for twelve hundred and eleven calls, whereas for the whole fiscal year, they had forty-eight, twenty-two. San Town Winchester did nine hundred and fifteen incidents during the quarter. Frankfurt accounted for nine hundred and four, and for the entire fiscal year, they were at thirty-six, thirty-five. Bel Air Edison was at seven hundred and eighty-eight incidents for the quarter. For the fiscal year, they were at twenty-nine, thirty-two. Upton accounted for seven hundred and sixty-six incidents for the fourth quarter. Brooklyn accounted for six hundred and sixty-five for the fourth quarter. Cherry Hill accounted for five hundred and thirty for the fourth quarter. Carrollton Ridge at four hundred and forty-two. Broadway East was at four hundred and thirty-three, and then finally Cold Stream, Homestead, Montebello was at four hundred and twenty-three. And then I'll pause at that point, Mr. Chair, as you ask.
Thank you, Chief Matts. Super, super interesting. I'm going to open the floor to questions. A bunch came to me as I was looking through this slideshow. So first, for the top top five neighborhoods, do we have a sense for the common calls for service for these top five neighborhoods? What are we seeing?
The most common call that we go out on, and you'll see it later in the presentation, the top five most common are going to be our low acuity calls, which are predominantly for sick patients. The other, if, I mean, if you want to start getting a higher acuity, with a higher acuity rounds out as an unconscious potential overdose, chest pain, or shortness of breath, they're the big ones, and there's all different breakdowns of how that works out, but that's the highest and the lowest as they break down.
What percentage roughly would you say of those calls are low acuity calls?
That I can answer off the top of my head. For the entire fiscal year of twenty-one, we had forty-six thousand low acuity calls, which are roughly thirty percent.
And do we know, on average, how many hours per day medic units are spending responding to low acuity calls?
I'd have to work that one out for you, Mr. Chair, to be honest with you. I mean, in terms of our unit hour utilization, our peak times really run from about six or seven in the morning until about one AM. We get a little bit of a lull for about five or six hours, and then things ratchet right up. I think between six and seven is when it really climbs up. But you'll see that later when we do the unit hour utilization, you'll see an increase, especially with the resurgence of COVID, those numbers are starting to climb.
Okay, I have a number of other questions, but I want to open the floor to the committee if folks have additional questions. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are EMS calls, right? Number of EMS incidents. Do we know what percentage of these are for anything opioid related?
The problem with opioid related calls, and it's one of the ones that, you know, we work with the opioid intervention teams and such with the Health Department, a lot of the questions there we say is, how can we get dual dispatch? The problem is overdoses don't come in as overdoses. Overdoses come in as everything except overdose. They come in as a person down, a man or a woman down, unconscious, unknown, unknown person, a person sleeping, possibly a shortness of breath or a sick. They don't come out as a straight overdose.
It's Chief, Chief Matts, right?
Yes, sir.
Chief, is there any post-recoding that occurs after the fact, just for the sake of, you know, working to keep accurate data?
Sure, so what we did is years ago, going all the way back to probably two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and sixteen, a lot of the people were pushing to say, well, every time that we give naloxone or Narcan, it would be an opioid related call. The problem with that is a lot of our providers, and they do it all over the state, it's called prophylactic administration of Narcan or naloxone. So what happens is when somebody goes into cardiac arrest, regardless of why they go into cardiac arrest, they give them Narcan. It could be for a ninety-year-old person in Levendale Nursing Home, and they'll give them a dose of Narcan. So what we arrived at, to be able to narrow down and be able to identify those type of calls, is we actually targeted, when we give a Narcan administration, when there was a response, because Narcan only works on patients that are under an opioid of some form. So what we do is we target a report at the end daily that comes out and tells us the number of overdoses we do. That number varies. It goes up in the summertime, and the summertime, it can go up from anywhere from twenty to forty overdoses a day. At this time, it drops, you know, at this time of year, it's usually down between ten and twenty, but the number kind of goes like this, Councilman.
Is it possible to code them post-service as either definitely opioid, potentially opioid, or definitely not? Like, for example, if I, you know, am in a car accident and break my arm, and there's no signs of opioid use, you could say that's definitely not an opioid one?
I could just...
I'm not trying to create, let me, let me preface, Mr., or is it Chief Lawner or Mr. Lawner?
Ben Law, I'm a physician, but it's okay. I usually get hello and hey and whatever else in the emergency department. Thank you.
Who do you work for, Ben?
University of Maryland School of Medicine.
Oh, excellent. One outstanding institution. Thanks for everything you guys do. Let me, let me take a step back real quick before you answer that, if I may. I don't want to create more work for anyone. I'm not in that business. I'm just curious if it's possible, if you thought about it, and whether you decided, hey, we looked at it, we thought, makes sense, but we're not going to do it, and here's the reason why, and that's all. I'm not pushing anyone to do it, I just want to be clear on that.
If I could just add a little bit of context here, and this is a challenge with it, as an emergency physician, you know, we want to encourage people to call, right, nine-one-one, and remember, the way we get these is that people contact nine-one-one. We have a very, the way to code the call is the information that is received in a very short period of time. The challenge that we have, you look nationally, about thirty percent of our calls are the lower acuity or opiate-related. Opiate-related doesn't necessarily mean that there's not something coexisting, and the granularity of the data is very difficult to pick out. In other words, we'll go to a cardiac arrest, and the tox screen may show opiates, that may be a prescription medicine, that may be a co-ingestion, it may not have anything to do with the etiology of the arrest. So I, one of my biggest things, and that you'll see, is that we want, we need to do a better job with dispatch, and there's no question that we can work harder to get the correct patient, the correct resources, the correct time, but it is very challenging on the initial side, because there is a lot of over-triage and inaccurate assumptions on behalf of not only EMS providers, but the general public. And unfortunately, the nine-one-one system, until you get eyes on the patient, does not have the granularity to kind of distinguish. That comes on the back end with a crisp report. It can be done, but that's going to require a manual abstraction and looking at data from a variety of other hospitals, if that makes sense.
You're on mute, Councilman.
Two years into WebEx, you think I figured it out? Yep, Chief Doc, thank you. Let me summarize it in my own words, and then you can let me know if I got it correctly, and then I'll yield my time to the chair. It sounds like you all have thought about how to more accurately classify EMS calls for service, especially with respect to opioid use. Unfortunately, there's not a way that is bulletproof to make sure it's a hundred percent accurate, and there's a, probably a decent amount of guessing involved, therefore, it's not a worthwhile endeavor. Is that fair? Or it's not a worthwhile endeavor to go any further than what you're currently doing? Is that fair?
That's fair. We're working with health to try to make, make a little, you know, more targeted response for that, that problem we have within the city, Councilman. But I think the way that we address the reporting and that we extract the data for the actual overdoses, that's about as accurate as I can find. I got to be honest with you, most places around the state, and the state of Maryland itself, reports strictly Narcan usage or naloxone usage, and it's flawed. They overinflate the numbers, you know, without diving in. And the other problem is when somebody dies of a cardiac arrest, we never know if that was because of an opiate unless they had a, you know, a needle or something nearby. Only the medical examiner can identify that. So I think to identify, we've identified what area we can target the best we can, and we do that, and that's one of those areas we're trying to work with Open Baltimore to be able to publish it by zip codes, one of the things that they had asked for us to work with.
Thank you, Chief, and Mr. Chair, if I can ask a fifteen-second follow-up to that, and then I'm done?
For it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I assume that there's very close and consistent coordination with our opioid overdose coordinator over at the Health Department, and that's, you know, daily interaction, right?
I wouldn't say daily, but I would say at least monthly or bi-weekly, they just, one of our staffs just had the opioid fatality review committee yesterday. We meet monthly. I would say every other week, probably, I interact with Ms. Spencer, the opioid coordinator.
Any, any opportunities to increase the frequency of that communication with Ms. Spencer and her team? I know they're doing great work. Would be deeply appreciated, even if it's just for regular check-ins, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. I really appreciate you considering that request. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? I'm curious, I'll throw one in there before we move on. I'm curious, have we considered any alternatives for low-acuity patients? One of the things that the Police Department does, for instance, is that we've got wagons to transport people. Have we considered anything similar to that? Is that a possibility for low-acuity patients that, for instance, twist their ankle, and we have to respond, and we got, you know, six people in a van with twisted ankles? They can get to a hospital when they get there, the ankle's not going to get a, hopefully not too much worse or better, but crazy idea from Councilman Conway.
You're stealing my thunder, Chairman. That's what we were going to go into a little bit later, you're stealing some of the thunder where we were trying to talk to. It's been identified throughout the state, it's a problem. We're trying to get into the weeds a little bit later, when we go to the other half of this presentation, I was going to talk to you about some of the problems we're having with COVID nineteen's resurgence, and some of the changes in posture that we have to do to be able to answer the call for service to the city of Baltimore. Well, hopefully, I can answer those questions for you later, if that's okay.
That would be great. If there are no further questions, I'll let you guys continue. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none, you guys can go on.
Great, thank you, sir. So a few more slides here about our calls and averages and such. What I'd like to point out that's really kind of interesting, if you look at the calls for service daily, weekly, and monthly, they fall in line between the fiscal year as well as the quarter. We, daily on average, we get four hundred and twenty-seven for this quarter, three thousand incidents for the week on average, whereas for the fiscal year, it was at twenty-nine, ninety-seven, which is really almost no difference. Monthly, we're averaging about thirteen thousand, one hundred, and on twenty-one, it was at twelve thousand, nine eighty-seven. I would point out, though, with the resurgence of COVID, you're starting to see a peak in a lot of those different things. Our peak call times are still the same as they were before, between the hours of midnight, I'm sorry, between the hours of twelve o'clock in the afternoon and seventeen fifty-eight or hours, or fifty-nine hours, which is really six o'clock at night, is our busiest time, that six-hour spread. Day of the week is Friday, time of the month is the end of the month that's most busy, and month of the quarter is December, that tends to be the most busy. We put the averages, laid them out between the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-one along with third quarter of two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty's fourth quarter, to kind of be able to give it some, you know, lay it against some apples and apples and oranges and oranges. Whereas we averaged four hundred and twenty-seven in the third quarter, it was a four hundred and fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-one, and it was at three hundred and ninety-eight in twenty, twenty, fourth quarter. Our weekly average here at three thousand this year, thirty-one hundred was what it was last, last quarter, and last year, when the fourth quarter, it was at two thousand and seven hundred and ninety-six. Bear in mind, we were at the peak of the COVID, and a lot of people weren't going to the hospital last year. I was, you know, one of the world outliers with COVID. And then monthly, thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand, and then at twelve. Most frequently types of call for advanced life support for fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, the top five, were difficulty speaking between breaths. Anything that's an O six is a difficulty breathing. They have, you know, a whole variety of different breakdowns, but essentially, you're talking at difficulty breathing, which for the incidents in the quarter was two thousand and one hundred and forty-two. Overdoses or unconsciousness, we're at nine hundred and seventeen for the fourth quarter, and that would be a thirty-one, would be the identifier. Overdose change in color, five hundred and ninety-nine. Chest pain with difficulty speaking was at five hundred and forty, and then the last but not least would be problems breathing not alert, five hundred and thirty-two. While we were doing the earlier bill, I did identify, these are the top five highest acuity call for the last quarter. I identified the numbers that were fed in there were wrong, so I dropped them because they were way off. The number should have been like for the twenty-six alpha ten, it should have come in about two thousand calls, and the number was at a hundred and thirty-three, Mr. Chair. So I dropped those, and either later today or early tomorrow, I'll have those emailed out, so you get the exact numbers. But the combined numbers of those five should have came in between five and ten thousand, and the total numbers weren't even a thousand. Instead of like skewing to that, I just dropped them while we were talking about the first bill. But the twenty-six card is by far our most common card, which is the sick card. There's a whole bunch of all different alternatives for that. Twenty-six alpha ten is unwell ill. Twenty-six alpha eleven is the vomiting card. Twenty-six alpha O two is the abnormal blood pressure. Sick is for twenty-six alpha O one, and the last one is twenty-six A O seven, which is a new onset immobility. And just to kind of give you a little perspective on those numbers from the fiscal year, twenty-five, the twenty-six alpha ten card, there was five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four calls for last year. So that number should have came in roughly about a thousand, but the numbers were way off. I just want to give you perspective. The twenty-six alpha O one, was it twenty-seven ten was the number for that. So I apologize for those, the shortfalls of those numbers, but I will email those either later today or early tomorrow, I'll have those out for everyone. Average time, I would like to talk about this for a second. The average time, EMS unit response time in the fourth quarter is up to ten minutes, twenty-two seconds. The average medic time is ten minutes and nineteen seconds, and the AMBO average is up to ten thirty. Last, for the entire fiscal year, when we made this last report, our average was at nine minutes and fifty-one seconds. That number's dramatically up, and I want to get into that a little bit later, but a lot of it has to do with the problems we're experiencing because of COVID. The suppression response time to EMS calls is still level at six minutes and thirty-five seconds. The average wait time for an EMS arrival is still at fifteen minutes and forty-six seconds. It's actually significantly up in FY twenty-one as a whole. That number was at eight minutes and twenty-six seconds. EMS fleet utilization, and I think this is a real marker, and if I was going to drive into something that we need to look at on a regular basis with EMS, is this concept of unit hour utilization? Basically, what that equates to is how many minutes of every hour are our units running? If you look at FY twenty-one as a whole, we were at fifty-one percent or fifty-one percent of every hour our units are running. In the last quarter of twenty-one, that number's climbed to sixty percent of every hour our units are running or on a call, physically on a call. And then he broke it down further from the overall number. The medics themselves went from fifty percent as an FY twenty-one total up to sixty-two percent, and AMBOs are pretty level. They were at fifty-two, and now they're up to fifty-three percent. The next two questions get into fleet. We went over this the last time. We have twenty-first line units, four critical alert units, and we staff up to four peaks at a time from nine to nine if they're available. And then this is the one metric that we talked about the last time, was the EMS fleet first line out of service, and we had pushed forward that this statistic is generated by Department of General Services and Fleet Maintenance, but I had noted from the email from Sam from your staff that they were going to talk about this. Am I correcting that assumption, Mr. Chair, or no?
Yes, we did have some questions around the fleet. Let's see, so we can, we can take a pause here and open up for some questions around staffing, fleet, and otherwise. I've got a few, so my first question is, how many, how many seats does the Fire Department have to fill on each shift in order to work at full capacity on all available medical units?
Well, for available units, you're talking twenty-eight first-line units, it takes two people to run those units.
Okay.
And then there's six EMS officers and a battalion chief, so that'll be seven, seven additional.
And on average today, how often, what percentage of time are those seats filled by folks working overtime?
That I'm going to have to defer, I'd have to look that one up. I don't know if one of my colleagues on the call would have that answer, potentially, but I'd have to look that up, Mr. Chairman, just to be able to give you an accurate answer for that.
If we're supposed to have an accurate answer, Mr. Chair, we'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be helpful. If you guys could just make sure to get that back to the committee after this meeting, that'd be great. And then the other question is, what is the current number of vacancies that the Fire Department has in the EMS division for EMTs and paramedics?
Yeah, I think I'm going to have to get that, I know we have, is Captain Robson still online? He's not, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Captain Robson, do you have that number at your fingertips?
The number of EMS vacancies?
Yes, sir.
The EMTs, I believe we're right now at five or six, and the paramedics were at thirty-four.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, on average, what percentage of EMS personnel are out on medical leave on a daily basis, just to give us a sense, if you have that on hand?
That certainly is a number I've got, we've got to pull, because it actually has changed significantly now since we're starting to, we peaked out on Omicron, and it looks like we're going downhill now, so we'd have to pull those numbers. The number this month would be drastically different from last month as well.
Okay. All right, so we'll wait to hear back from you on that. And then with regard to the vehicles, I know we had a bunch of vehicles that were down. It would be, did you guys be able to speak to us about the maintenance process and where we are with returning vehicles to the street?
Absolutely, sir. We've had a couple of issues. We've had one significant issue with several of the medics, thirteen in particular, that were taken out of service because of frame cracks on a particular model. Those are in the process of being repaired. Presently, we have seven repaired, and we have six more that are in progress that will be completed by the end of the month. Additionally, just a quick second here. We're still operating four units short because of vehicles that the decision was made not to repair. The vehicles, based on their age, it was not fiscally responsible to go ahead and repair those units. And we still have seven vehicles today that are still in the body shop. Presently, to put it in perspective, when we look at the twenty-nine units that we had down as of, for example, yesterday, five were in our shops at Central or our substations, but twenty-four of those were at vendors. So one of the challenges that we've been running into is being able to make sure that we get the vehicles back from the vendors in a timely basis, especially due to the rise of COVID and the staffing shortages that the vendors are facing.
All right, and so you said four, we are taking out of service, and the remaining medics we expect to have back in service by the end of this month?
That's correct. Okay. Of the frame damage ones, that's, that will be another additional six medics that'll be back in service by the end of the month.
Okay, and then net, how much are we down by the end of the month? What would we expect to be down? We repaired and taken some out, what are we looking at?
Should be in the fifteen, fifteen-vehicle range.
Fifteen vehicles, okay.
That's what we're anticipating at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions from folks on Councilman Morales?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Um, the other day we had a, uh, I, I joined a hearing that Councilwoman Cray, um, had, uh, sponsored about, um, the COVID vaccine and also how to get our, um, our, uh, folks back to work, um, safely and the fire department still has the lowest vaccination rate. And I'm wondering what the plan is to get that up. Because that also obviously affects how many people we have on the street.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Ramos, we've, um, we've met with, um, our members, we've sent out information to encourage them. We've met with, uh, labor leadership to continue to encourage them, um, to be vaccinated. Um, the, um, the mayor led the charge on encouraging, including actually putting money on the table to uh, move people forward to get vaccinated. So we're hoping that helps us turn the corner.
So the last number we saw was about sixty-nine percent. Do you anticipating getting, getting that to at least seventy-five percent?
I, I, I'd hesitate to give you a number. I hope it is, you know, I, I, um, un- unfortunately, we're, we're dealing with some of the same challenges everybody else is dealing with, trying to encourage people to get vaccinated, dealing with misinformation and other things. Um, but we're, we're trying to articulate as much as we can to our members of how important it is for them to get vaccinated. We were, we, we were literally devastated through the month of December, uh, based upon people that were, um, people that were hit with COVID. And we need them to get vaccinated. So we're leading the charge and we're continuously, I'm, I'm literally going station to station and visiting. Now, I'm not just talking about COVID, I'm talking about other things, but that's one of the high points I'm hitting as I go literally station to station.
Thank you. And how many people were we down in December?
I know for a while there we were running anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and forty people off a day sick. Um, now granted, I think, uh, the, as far as.
What, what is that percentage wise?
Uh, percentage wise, as far as staffing for the apparatuses for a daily shift, we, we need around three hundred people. Uh, three hundred and two, in fact, Chief Matt just sent me the number to add clarity to it, three hundred and two people. So that tells you we were around a third to a half of people who were, who, who would have been sitting in seats. And I can't, now we can't give all those to COVID. Uh, but certainly we can give a significant number to, to, to the COVID.
So, so the three hundred and two, that's when it's fully staffed with everything. So some of this is vacancies as well? Or, or you're just talking about the hundred and forty, we're just down on sickness or vacation or whatever?
No, ma'am. I'm speaking specifically a hundred to a hundred and, hundred and some odd people calling out, uh, sick.
Yeah, that's, um, devastating actually for, and potentially, potentially, uh, uh, you know, somebody could have lost their life, not only with COVID, but you know, God forbid a fire. Um, so I mean, I hope that we can, um, you know, work with you on, on that. Um, the other question, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, Chief Ford, can you? I don't, uh, I'm still learning. So I don't know how exactly to put this, but, um, how do the shifts work? I mean, there's twelve-hour shifts, nine to nine, and then nine to whatever. And like, there's like peak hours and non-peak hours. Are we able to like balance and make sure that if we're fully staffed, that we've got, um, or maybe we, because we're not fully staffed yet and take COVID away, but just in general, because we don't have as many people. Um, what would, what would that look like? I mean, if our peak hours are nine to nine during the day, how many EMS do we need? Versus, you know, other times, I would think nighttime is also a big deal. So I'm just trying to get a sense of the staffing issue. And then I have a hospitals question, but if, if you may have talked about this earlier and I'm sorry if I missed it.
That's okay. Is, 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 uh, in particular Chief Savella, and I'm calling him because he's, he was over operations. I don't know if he's on the line, but uh, Chief Savella, if you're on the line, you can, you can chime in, but I'll, I'll start hold the conversation.
Um, here.
Okay. Can you, can you articulate a response to, to, um, Councilwoman's question?
Yeah. So, um, I, I, I know Councilwoman Ramos, thank you. Um, you, you sat in on the presentation I made about our attendance, um, and the issues that we've been dealing with on a regular basis. Um, so basically the way it works is our suppression units work a twenty-four hour shift, zero seven hundred um, to zero seven hundred the following day. They work a twenty-four hour shift. They're off for twenty-four, work another twenty-four, and then they have five days off. Our EMS, they work, uh, a two ten-hour days, two fourteen-hour nights, and then they're off for. So suppression and EMS.
I, I remember this conversation now. You'll have to excuse me. I'm sorry.
Got you. So.
Keep going.
Yeah. So, and, and when we have to backfill in EMS, um, uh, due to the shortages with sick or whatever, vacation is a big one. Um, a lot of times if we don't have the EMS people that have signed up for overtime or callbacks, we have to actually move people from suppression over into EMS to backfill those positions. Um, so with the sick leave that we had been averaging, you know, somewhere in the sixty, fifty to sixty range. And then actually, uh, once we got through the holidays, we were averaging actually a lot more than that. We were up above seventy, seventy-five people. Um, a perfect example, when you asked about the COVID, um, on the twenty-third or, no, I'm sorry, New Year's, New Year's Eve, there were a hundred and twenty-eight of our members were off duty sick that could have been working that day. So I backtracked with our infection control officer. So I didn't know the names because only they're supposed to have the names of those that are tested positive. He ran the, he ran the reports. Out of those a hundred and, uh, a hundred and twenty-eight people that were off that day, it was forty, I believe it was forty-three of them were off as COVID positive. And then there were another ten to twelve that had gone to Mercy or to PSI with COVID-like symptoms. So out of that hundred twenty-eight, um, fifty of them were COVID-related type issues. So that still leaves us close to seventy people that were off duty sick. So yes, COVID has boosted up those numbers. Um, but that's not the, that's not the, the single issue with that. It's, they've gone high, but we're still running so anywhere between fifty to sixty a day going off duty sick.
And so this number, um, that's on your website as of one nineteen today, um, there's seven hundred and twenty-nine people that have tested positive in the fire department. But that, I mean, that's cumulative. I got that. Um, so, um, but it sounds like with that number of people and then the hundred and twenty during the holidays or whatever it was, that people are testing positive multiple times.
Yeah. And just, just so you know too, and the chief didn't mention it, we did hold a COVID, uh, vaccination clinic for all of our members. They could come while they were on duty or off duty. It was about a six, six-day event where we had, um, where we actually, they could come in, they could get a first dose, second dose or booster dose um, for that period. They didn't have to be on duty. If they were off duty and they wanted to come in. So, so we have made a very concerted effort to try to get our people vaccinated. But it's just like with everything else that's going on, um, some people are just unwilling to do it.
But it, it seems to me like with, um, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if, can I continue? Um, it, it seems to me that the, um, uh, there's gotta be some other COVID safety happening because, um, with multiple people getting sick multiple times. I mean, the seven hundred and twenty-nine number is pretty substantial. And thank you, by the way, for being transparent about it. I do appreciate that. Um, you know, and maybe this is a conversation for a different day that we can have offline, but it seems to me like we've got to do something. And granted that people might be getting sick from their surroundings and not from each other, but they also could be getting sick from each other. So I want to make sure that we've got those protocols and please, everybody's got the proper mask, that kind of thing.
We have several policies and procedures in place as far as masking, as far as particular N ninety-fives. The KN ninety-fives that, that the public uses, we actually use N ninety-fives, which are specially fitted for our members. They use them on all patient-related calls, all patient contact, regardless of what, whether it's a possible COVID patient or not. Any patient contact we have, we have very, we have very strict policies and procedures in place. Our infection control officers work very hard when, uh, right now I'm not in operations anymore, but when I was in operations, we worked hand in hand to put together policies and procedures to make sure that our members were protected to the fullest with what we were available, what we were able to give them. So we are, we are well above what the CDC recommends.
Yeah. I, I, I'd like to add a last point to this. We went, we actually went to, um, our members using KN ninety-fives around the station, probably only three or four months after the, um, onset of COVID, because we realized that we need that level of protection because our folks literally live together. So, and, and we, 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 we started establishing, and Dr. Ben was involved, all of us did it. We started, uh, doing videos, trying to educate our members on how to keep themselves safe and even to encourage them to get vaccinated. So we, we've done a full court press to it. Not saying we can't do more, we're going to continue to do more, but we do have challenges in that area.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Um, that's it for now, Mr. Chair. I've taken up enough time for now. I have other questions that we can go on later. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Ramos. I just wanted to, uh, appreciate you for asking all those questions around COVID because I know, um, that's something that I, you know, I reached out to the chief during the holidays and we were severely short, short-staffed, had a fire in my district. It has affected our response. Um, you know, just making sure that we continue to be prepared as best as possible on the fire side and the EMS side. Uh, we know we're, we're not out of this. We're going to see another spike, who knows when. But, um, continuing to make sure that folks are vaccinated and using the proper cautions, uh, is, is really, really key, especially for first-line folks who are interacting with folks every day. So, um, with that, any other questions from the committee before we move forward? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, so two things. One, and, and I, I probably need a little bit more time to sort of figure this out or, or how to really frame it. But, uh, so obviously looking at the average response time of, I guess, ten minutes or so for EMS calls. Um, I'd be interested in a little bit more like what some of the outliers are, um, in that, uh, obviously anecdotes are, are just that, but I had, I had a family member that was involved in, uh, a vehicle accident. Um, the fire apparatus, uh, arrived pretty quickly. Um, but it took EMS, uh, over forty-five minutes to arrive, uh, this person's elderly. And, uh, ended up in the situation where the firefighters helped load them into another family member's car to get them to the hospital. Um, given the length of time it was taken for that response. Uh, again, I, I know it's an outlier situation that, that would not be indicative of every single call, and I'm not trying to frame it in that way. Um, but I, 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 I would be interested in, to know what circumstances would, would lead to something like a forty-five minute response time, um, as an outlier, uh, on that.
Yeah. And, and, uh, Chief Matts, I'm going to start into this, and I know that later on in your presentation, you're going to address this specific issue. But Councilmember Burnett, we, we, we certainly have a, have, have a, uh, system set up that the initial responders are normally the, uh, the fire units and they get there and they're EMS trained, they can stabilize the patient. Um, the challenges that we've had is, is for a long time. And Omicron and, and COVID has, has certainly exacerbated this problem. For a long time, we've been overwhelmed with low acuity nine-one-one calls where we, we didn't have the resources to maintain that and maintain the ambulances for the high-level calls. The, the calls that really, really needed rapid response. Um, so COVID actually further just exacerbated that situation. And I wouldn't say that it just happened for us. I would argue it happened for every other municipality throughout the country and the hospitals as well. That the, the, the end result is the continuum of care of us taking people to hospital. And that's one of the things I think Chief Matts is going to address as well, late on into this process, because there's, there's a, there's a larger system that we're a part of. Um, not just us having available ambulances based on call volume, but there's a process of us not having available ambulances because the hospital is, is backed up as well. So, um, that's, that's part of what Chief Matts and Dr. Ben are going to speak about as well.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll wait for, for that. Um, I did, uh, in the line of questioning that, uh, Councilmember Ramos, uh, brought up around, uh, COVID vaccination rates, what are the testing protocols, um, for folks that are unvaccinated? Is it in alignment with the rest of the city? Are there carve-outs? Um, can, can you speak to that a little bit, um, around, uh, the, for the folks that are, are unvaccinated? Um, how, how much testing are they undergoing on a weekly basis?
Chief Phil, I, I know you were involved in that. Our members are tested weekly, uh, councilmen. They're, they're scheduled on a particular, uh, pathway, whether it's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday through Friday. When they're scheduled to come in, they come in on duty, go and they have their testing and then they go back in service. Um, we're notified roughly, uh, it's within twelve hours or so, I guess we get the results. They go through to, to, um, our infection control office and then we accordingly handle our personnel. There is a lot of, you know, uh, you know, asymptomatic positives that come through. That's one of the other problems with the increased testing. You're going to have the increases on, on the, you know, the, the asymptomatic positive patients. Or the patients that are like the day before they really start feeling bad. And they're, they're in a work, you know, at work and, uh, once we're notified of them, they, they follow the prescribed procedures where they go off duty, report to the patient safety infirmary and then, uh, follow whatever the normal guidance is through the, um, CDC as well as our local health department for those people. Did, did that kind of answer what you were looking for, sir?
Yeah, no, that, that's helpful. Um, and, and are they, where are they getting tested? Um, is it, is it at the, the station that they're assigned to? Are they going to a, another more centralized location?
You, you've been working on that. Can you follow up on that?
Uh, yes, sir. So we were able to work it out with Five Medicine, where we've, uh, we have two places, Coward Street and the West Northern Parkway place for our members to go, um, they can make an appointment. They still have to go online to make the appointment. Then we get them through as many as we can while they're on duty. We rotate companies through, which is something that we've done in the past for various other training or, or fit tests for air masks, those type of things, requirements. So they have the abilities to do that. Um, we, we try to get as many as we can through on duty. Um, and then Five Medicine has been very cooperative with us to set up a, those two places and times, um, time blocks just dedicated for fire and police so that we can get in and get out while we're on duty. Um, because, you know, obviously we, we need to get in very quickly and, and they're very, they're very good with it. I, I went to several of them initially and we were able to rotate a company through there in probably less than ten minutes. You know, as long as they already, um, had gone online to register. Now, if they didn't register, that way it'd take a little bit longer, but if they, before they left the firehouse, if they went on the internet and registered on Five Medicine site, we, we, we'd have four people in and out of there within ten minutes. So, and it's five days a week. Uh, Monday, both places are open for us in the morning. And, and, uh, it's a two, two-hour block in the morning, two-hour block in the afternoon, five days a week.
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Uh, without any other questions, we're going to move on, let Chief Matts finish up the rest of his presentation. Chief Matts, who is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, we went over this last time and I don't want to, you know, beat this to death, but I just want to make sure. A lot of people say, why are our low-acuity calls so high? Why are our call volumes so high? And just want to remind, and I put a couple of infographic, in, infographics on here. One to remind everybody that, you know, healthcare itself only accounts for about ten percent of, of your overall health. The social determinants of health have a lot of to do with that as well as individual behaviors and genetics. Um, and then I went in, in depth the last time about the social determinants of health. Um, really, it, it, Dr. Loner, I'll let you pipe in here. You're, you're, you're the expert on this.
Um, no, I, I, the only thing I would say about this, and I appreciate the council's time. I think it is so important to provide data within context, but this is the environment in which we live, which certainly affects, um, our delivery of care. And I hope what you'll see as we proceed through this, uh, presentation is that a lot of these mitigation strategies take this into account because, um, uh, we have, our, our jurisdiction's problems are not new. Um, however, there are challenges specific to the environment in which we work and that's shared with many other urban jurisdictions, specifically our undomiciled population, the epidemic of substance use that we actually, um, already looked at. I can tell you there's been a lot of money that has been thrown into this particular situation in terms of primary care, but it's not as simple as that. Uh, I can put up all the primary care clinics I want, but unless I have the ability to divert nine-one services and transport people to these primary care clinics, um, it can be very difficult. So, uh, this is something where I know that all of you are well-versed serving this, um, vulnerable community and a community that quite frankly is needy. Um, but that is our charge and that's important. I, I want to also say that against the background, I think there's no other statistic that is more powerful than this one, that I also said in a community. That I also said in a community of, uh, the fifty metropolitan medical directors and international medical directors for EMS. Uh, Baltimore City, again, I have to say is number one in terms of, uh, there are three hundred and thirty-three calls for nine-one-one for every thousand. Uh, type of patient population, uh, in our city. So that reflects that the social determinants of health and it is not that everybody is dying of a heart attack. It's that nine-one-one is a safety net and the safety net is something that is quite strained. So that also frames the background. But, um, I have a couple of slides which I think, I only have five, uh, but that will, uh, hopefully provide additional context of the data.
Thank you, Dr. Loner. And as we talked about last time, that, like Dr. Loner alluded to. Our population, it has a lot of comorbidities and that's what we talked about the last time about the increased EMS usage as well as ED usage. The, the solution is a multifaceted approach using any of these population health programs. That have a positive impact on the social determinants of health, eventually reduce the call volume with better patient outcomes and improved response times. But the background of this, Dr. Loner really inserted this and really wanted me to push this in and kind of remind everybody. What we're dealing with right now is an exacerbation of something that's been around for years. I've been in this since the nineties. Chief Phil has been in a lot longer than me, Chief Clark, but Ben, weren't you instrumental in writing part of this, um, uh, report back in?
Yes, sir. Uh, so for the purposes of perspective, in two thousand and eleven, I was a co-author on the statement of ED ambulance delay. So what I, what really, um, stresses me, uh, as opposed to the COVID staffing and everything else is that when we consider this as a new problem. So not only are we looking at the history of emergency medicine and the challenges that have contributed to this. But as Chief Matt said very clearly, COVID has exacerbated what has preexisted. We have always had, we have always had ED crowding delays. We have always been playing catch-up with ambulance. And if you were to ask me back in two thousand and fourteen, what are some of the challenges? We would have said lack of access to primary care. We have staffing issues. We need to kind of, um, really wrap our heads around nine-one-one. Um, you know, my world is the intersection of emergency medicine and public health. I'm EMS trained, I'm an emergency clinician. And so my whole job is, is trying to deal with access. And I hope you'll see as the presentation unfolds, that a lot of these solutions are dynamic. Um, you'll see a lot of similarities that are very intentional between a surge plan, uh, how we deal with the increased demand. And what the three and five year plan looks like. And those things inform statistics. So, uh, I, I think we have a unique problem. Uh, our emergency departments within Maryland were last in terms of offload time is ranked by CMS. We have a, a very significant challenge ahead of us, but it is not a challenge that we cannot affect. Uh, it is not a challenge that we cannot mitigate. Um, and I, you know, credit to the city council for looking at some of the root causes of EMS utilization. Uh, because that's going to be key to informing both current and future strategies as we go along.
So as I had said, the resurgence of COVID nineteen and more specifically the Omicron variant has really caused a lot of stress. Dr. Loner, this is one of his famous slides, but I want to basically be able to illustrate. The, the Maryland EMS system runs on a color code system. Whenever you see yellow or red, that means you're not supposed to go to that emergency department. This is region three where we reside. And that's how bad it is at different times. That's how bad it, we're, we're having troubles getting in. Honestly, we're going to circumvent this whole, I'm going to talk about it a little bit, but we're actually just going to bypass. Because this color code system is absolutely useless when every hospital in the area is on yellow or red. Yellow just means there's no beds available. Red means there's no cardiac beds available. And that's just a, just a snapshot of how bad the system is. Ben, you want to talk about the performance chart below it?
Uh, ju- just, just for, for clarification, as I remember, this, this is all the time, well, with the pandemic. Uh, it has always been this way.
Yeah, um, you're, and that is well said, and this is what I think we have been trying to, um, I think emphasize. The bottom chart is, is quite interesting. Now, it is so, it is, it is so bad that we have never been able to reach. So this is what's called a fractal performance chart, because averages can be, uh, can be sort of taken into account any way you like. And, and anybody that has, uh, had the unfortunate, um, drawing the straw to listen to me talk about this. As we talk about transparency of data, but there's also context. So on that bottom graph, the intersection between green and red reflects the percentage of the time. That we meet an offload landmark of forty percent. So we have never been able to meet that, uh, according to a set benchmark. What COVID does is further push that down. So this underscores the challenge, the background of the challenge of which we're operating. Um, and that basically is, uh, reflected the month of, um, December. Uh, again, not, not a new statistics, as you said, uh, Mr. Chairman.
And to be honest, this is what we look, look at every day when we go to surrounding ERs. I would challenge anybody to take a look, especially at our surrounding hospitals. So surrounding hospitals are a challenge, is they not only share most of our ambulances in Baltimore City, but you also have Baltimore County and Arundel County, Howard interacting. And it's causing huge problems. Um.
Chief Matts, before you go, I want to, I want to add one statement in this before we, because the direction of going, I want to cut, add a little context for us. Around six years ago, seven years ago, we, we came to the conclusion we needed to add more ambulances. So we leveraged ALS units to add more BLS units. And, and, in fact, increasing our, our EMS response capabilities by thirty percent. Thinking that would help us out and give us, give, and improve our response time and give our people a little bit of elbow and breathing room, breathing room rather. We realized that, yes, we prob, now we probably still need more ambulances, probably, but that's not nearly the majority of the answer. In fact, it's, it's, it's not even close. Um, yeah, we should have done it back then, but we, we were under the wrong assumption about what we were going to get out of it. Go ahead, Chief Matts.
So, uh, members of the city council, remember the last presentation, I gave this presentation to the left. Where I was talking about our average offload, the region as well as our worst offenders. Just to give you a side-by-side snapshot from October to now. Last week, our average was at fifty-three minutes. We're very good because we're very aggressive and we're pushy to get our people out. The regional average went from fifty-eight minutes to seventy minutes. The region three, people that took over an hour to get off went from nine percent to thirteen percent. In the original presentation, I told you our worst two offenders were at sixty-seven minutes, ninetieth percentile or ninety percent of the time offloading. And fifty-five minutes. That time last week, the worst offender was at a hundred and forty-one minutes. The second was a hundred and seventeen minutes. And just to give you a little more perspective, and we track this, and to be fair, I tried to do apples and apples. This is the seventh through the fourteenth. The bottom line tells you the total number of hours that we spent lined up in hospital waiting rooms. You know, if you look at like the thirteenth, we spent a hundred hours total accumulated time in the ED. That's equivalent to a hundred calls. Because we average about a call an hour. So it's impossible, what I'm trying to just reflect to you. And these are the same problems that we're going through, the regions going through. It's very difficult to operate an EMS system when you're spending sixty-eight hours on, on the wall waiting. So you have members that run, 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 and then they're stuck.
This is, this is not a regional problem, this is a national phenomenon.
Yeah.
Everybody's dealing with it.
It really is. Baltimore County, I've, I've heard from one of my, 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 uh, partners in other parts of the city. Not only are we going through the staffing issues, you know, I know we talked briefly about staffing. Washington DC had the equivalent of an entire shift off duty a couple of weeks ago. Baltimore County had over two hundred people off. So it's, it's, everybody's going through the same problem, but this offload is just getting worse and worse. And what we're trying to do is, we actually decided to change our, our posture per se. And Ben, I'm, I'm probably just going to get into this right now. The problem is for a long time, Baltimore City's hospitals have pretty well held us hostage. There's a, the Emergency Medical Treatment and Active Labor Act, it was brought about, and I think it was eight, eighty-six. Basically, it was the dump, they call it the anti-dump law that came about. What happened for years before eighty-six, if somebody showed up in an emergency room and didn't have valid insurance, they would ship them off or dump them somewhere else. Part of Intala is they require a hospital, any patient that presents to a hospital within so many feet of the ER door, it's their responsibility. When we go into these hospitals, it's reasonable and, and Dr. Loner will speak for the state. But they're looking at a twenty to forty minute offload as an average and it's considered a reasonable offload time. When we start getting out of these areas, basically the hos- hospitals are holding us hostage. And basically what I told the hospitals on a regional call recently, I told them that, that what they're doing is it's disrespectful to our patients. It's disrespectful to our people and it's disrespectful to the citizens of Baltimore and that we're going to have to change our posture. And some of those posture changes involve things like, remember I showed you the map of the, the, the yellow and the red? Well, we historically have done, when it's in critical or like blizzards or bad snow, we go to code blue or modified code blue. That means we take patients to the appropriate hospital, which basically means we have to go to the closest hospital, the closest appropriate hospital. We disregard the color codes. Um, some of the other things that we're looking at doing, um, and we're going to just talk about today. In terms of dispatch, um, we want to, you know, promote that our medical duty officer, our telephone triage assists with reprioritization of some calls. Um, we're reinforcing, I know early in the pandemic, we did the viral syndrome pandemic triage. And basically that's a set of criteria. When we go to somebody's house, if they check all the boxes and they're low acuity. We basically leave them at home to, to convalesce at home. If they meet the certain criteria, they have to do with certain blood pressures, certain, you know, priorities. And if they meet those criteria, they stay at home. Um, Dr. Loner, did you want to talk about the other part of the viral, um, pandemic triage breakdown as it relates to, uh, dispatch?
Once we continue, I, we have a couple of slides on that, Chief.
Oh, you want to talk about that a little bit later? Okay. Um, and then some of the other stuff that we're going to endorse some of our, you know, we're at a crisis standard right now of, of care. Most of the hospitals around us, and I'm probably, probably seen it in the media, where they say, you know, XYZ hospitals going to a crisis standard of care. What that means is the hospitals are saying, we're in such of a crisis right now that our normal ratios of like one nurse to four patients has changed. It could be one to eight, one to ten, to try to adjust to that. We're in those same crisis standards, like what Councilman Burnett brought up earlier. Part of the procedure that we're going to do is we're going to support, uh, if suppression opts to transport a patient low acuity to the hospital. We want to get the patients to the hospital. Um, we're also going to be reinforcing our, um, our thirty, sixty and ninety minute rule at the hospital. At thirty minutes, our MDO has contacted that our members are staged for a long period of time. At sixty minutes, our EMS officers will respond to that hospital, um, to try to facilitate offload. And at ninety minutes, our battalion chief EMS will show up at that hospital, liberate our units. Um, I think ninety minutes is fair enough. I think ninety minutes is excessive. If I showed you the number of times that we're waiting in excess of an hour, it's crazy. You know, one day alone, I think we had thirteen incidences exceeding two hours. Um, but basically BCMS is going to be helping them to transition to a hospital wheelchair or relocate that patient to a waiting room. Transition them to a hospital with stretcher, transition them to a hospital wheelchair. Um, and transition that potentially to a hospital cot. Baltimore City Fire Department have several hundred cots that are the low to the floor cots that we, that fold up. Basically, we're going to put on each unit and at a certain threshold and interacting with that hospital. We're going to basically transfer the patient to a cot, notify the staff that the patient is on them and then leave, so that we can answer more responses on the street. Um, the other option that's available to the patient is actually, um. If they want to go to another ER, but the problem is early on, when we made the thirty, sixty, ninety rule, it's easy to say, well, I could take you from west to east. The problem we're having right now is everybody's packed. So it's, it's really kind of out, out of the wind, um.
I, I, I'm really curious, um, what. What, uh, synchronization of sorts we have between efforts with the health department? And, uh, community efforts on the front end to address, um. Existing conditions that lead to folks relying on, um, the ambulance in order to get to a hospital or emergency services regardless. Um, what, what efforts, how, how those things tie together? I'm not asking this question well, so please forgive me. But what, what, what coordination is happening between, um, EMS? Um, our emergency departments and a health department to make sure that as best as possible. Um, we're addressing folks with early intervention. Or, uh, if we can, instead of bringing folks to hospitals, address those issues in the field and maybe not have to bring them to the hospital. So on and so forth. Are there other options to sort of, um, relieve some of the pressure on, um, on our hospitals as well?
Ben, I'm, I'm going to go for a second, then I'll let you step in. So the first thing that we're doing, we, we collaborate with the hospitals every month. We meet with all the area hospitals. We've laid these problems out to the hospitals. They're aware of the problems. Initially, they actually said, well, you're wrong about Intala, but honestly, we verified through CMS. Uh, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid actually support, and, and they, they came out with this, uh, a stance on, it's called hospital parking. Which is people stuck in emergency rooms and that it's not, it's actually considered an Intala complaint that can result in fines to the hospitals. Um, but we do try to collaboratively, collaboratively work with the hospitals. When we go to the hospitals, we're not trying to say we're going to walk in the door, dump the patient and walk out. We're trying to make, you know, a soft handoff at a certain point. Um, but I got to be honest with you. The system's stressed right now. I mean, I'll let Dr. Loner speak. It's, it can be pretty contentious. Um, we've had instances where our medics will call on, on the, the box and say, I have somebody coming in. Hospitals will actually say, please don't bring them here. You know, we've had other hospitals that I, I, Dr. Loner, I can let you interject. It, it gets a little more confrontational where historically it hasn't been confrontational. And I think it has a lot to do with, uh, the COVID, the burnout, everybody's kind of at their wits' end. Um, you know, Dr. Loner, you, you work in that ED, you tell me what it's like for you.
So, Mr. Chair, you had asked also what, um, what components are in place to help mitigate this on the front end? And, and that is an absolutely great question. There are multiple population health programs, there are transitional care programs. This was all under the Affordable Care Act, but quite frankly, these interfaces fail when the call is made to nine-one-one. And the nine-one-one system is comparatively underdeveloped. And that's one of the things we'll talk about as we move through this. So there's a lot of stuff on the front end, but once the call is made to nine-one-one, that is an emergency response system that really needs to evolve. And that has been that way for quite some time. So we'll talk a little bit about some of those things and, and there are proven concepts. We are not lost. But to your point, I mean, I work in that world. I work in an ER where, uh, you know, we see eighty thousand patients, like eighty thousand patients a year. The hospitals are just not saying, we're going to hold ambulances hostage. The hospitals are overwhelmed because the ED is the point where you can walk in and not have to pay for care. So the emergency departments, I, I've worked overnight where there are two nurses. So the solution can't be, as you said, bring her to the hospital and establish an adversarial relationship with hospitals. There are partners to care and to that end, we're talking about how we as a fire department can own some of that a little bit more and defer them on the front end. Because the nine-one-one pathways that are currently in existence, pretty much when you pick up the phone, it goes to nine-one-one. Um, as we talk about how to mitigate some of these statistics that we addressed earlier, uh, we'll talk about some problems that will not only, or some strategies that will not only affect us right now. But I think really position us for success in the future. Um, and that's, I think, downstream in the presentation, Chief. So we've also, so this is in our three and a, or three and a half year, three to five year plan. We talked about the cycle of the EMS call. I just wanted to reiterate that we have a couple of phases in which we can impact nine-one-one. So mitigation is kind of before the call, like you're talking about what happens to dispatch response and then what happens when we actually transport. So I, I just want to, uh, put that up there for transparency, uh, you know, and I, and I hope that when we talk about EMS plans, I am. Uh, it, it does not benefit me to, um, in any way massage the data to make it look better. I think we have to understand the crisis is here, it has been here, and as you mentioned, we will likely deal with COVID or something else during the next time. So our EMS plan is we build the infrastructure and our response to this is evidence-based, scalable and flexible. So when we talk about different components and we have the ability to measure it, we'll be able to answer your question with a lot of granularity to say. Uh, of the calls that are low acuity, which one of them can we intercept? Which one of those can we redirect? So, uh, and that begins with a couple of things. So number one is mitigation, and this is where we have a significant opportunity. So in collaboration with public health, with the health department, with MIMS, uh, and I know Chief Ford has embraced this as well, we have to educate. Now, I am never in a position, I never want to tell people, don't call nine-one-one, but I want to say, call nine-one-one for what is appropriate. And that is something which is a change in messaging, because before, nine-one-one used to be the, the place where we could sort all this out. And I think it's fair to say that regardless of all of our orientation and data, nine-one-one system is quite overwhelmed. So can we engage in messaging to talk about what nine-one-one is most well-suited for? And I think we're seeing this now with behavioral health diversion with two-in-one, three-in-one, we need to do a better job of messaging. In other words, avoid the disconnect between, yes, we're going to be there twenty-four hours, but we also cannot be there twenty-four hours in a timely way. To your point, uh, Commissioner Burnett, that if we, if Councilman Burnett, we, if we don't have the ambulance to send because people are waiting and they're held up at hospitals. We really need to take a healthy pause and let ambulances requested. Um, there have been jurisdictions that have been very hard on this messaging. Uh, some jurisdictions, uh, across the country have said, we're just not sending. Um, I think the message should be from us that we are, we are never going to deny people help. But what we can do, and what we can certainly do a better job of, is give them the help they need. So if you're calling because you need a ride to the hospital, if you're calling because you have no other ride to the hospital, that's where we need to leverage existing resources. Collaborate more with the health department to, to essentially, um, meet the problem where it lies. So mitigation strategies are a big part, and that is not only in this surge plan, but also our, our three to five year plan. Now, what happens now, and this is the state of the fire department that has been, this is the state of many fire departments. So you call nine-one-one, it goes to nine-one-one communications jointly operated by fire, police. Uh, and then once it gets to fire dispatch, we send either an ambulance and quite, I, I would say, eh, I don't know. Um, you know, the peak time data would say nine to nine, but very frequently in the morning, we start off with no medic available. Uh, that is not an unusual occurrence. So fire suppression will be sent in order to meet that need. And I think we can appreciate that if we continue to drive this paradigm to the right, which is the existing paradigm for dispatch. We're going to run out of ambulances and then we're going to be in the situation where it's difficult because we're all, we're all staying there. Now, we do have, we do have, um, a lot of resources that are designed to pay some attention to this. We have a limited nurse triage plan and paramedic triage plan where our paramedics will be able to answer calls. But the majority of data from that program, which costs several thousand dollars a day, we put a, we put a paramedic in there. And this data has been replicated across countless jurisdictions. If the person says, well, I feel sick and I still want to go, we send them to the hospital. And the only way we have to get them there is by ambulance. So, uh, we have also behavioral health, a couple of other things. I think in order to wrap ourselves, uh, and our heads around this program a little bit more, um, efficiently. We have to build upon what other urban jurisdictions with similar resource problems have done. That is to say, we position the clinicians in the front. So number one, you inform dispatch as opposed to calling in and then we say, okay. We go through your four, we go through the high acuity questions. Do you have chest pain, shortness of breath, is there a stroke, bleeding, whatever else? If the answer to that is no, you take a pause and you provide dispatch as a method of healthcare delivery. We ascertain what the need of the community is, if it is a behavioral health response team, if it is a ride to the doctor's office, and most importantly, most importantly, and this has been proven in DC, you connect that caller to the resources they need. So if you have a nurse triage line, which has health information exchange, which has transport capability, which has connections to the federally qualified healthcare centers, we can say, not, not only we're not going to send you an ambulance, but we have an appointment that is scheduled for you at this date, at this time, and we transport. The challenge is those protocols take a lot of medical supervision, they take staff, they take infrastructure, and that is something the fire department, you know, granted, we're all here for all hazards emergency response. One option is to say, we're not going to do that. I think all of us, you know, in, under Chief Ford's leadership realizes that that is not what we can do in 2022, right? We have to say, this is an added challenge. And just like we respond to all hazards, we will also build in the mechanism so that when we identify these low acuity calls, we have the ability to put patients in the specific boxes to get them the care they need and connect them to valuable resources. So the rest of the plan just talked about that. I know that we've spent quite a bit in talking about what a, a 911 and responsive system looks like. The data coming out from DC would suggest that in the first year, they have a very similar response system. In the first year of their nurse triage line, they were able to successfully divert 7,000 EMS calls. And that was in the first year of the inception from that program. And as they do that, they learn more about not only the social determinants of health, but what they need to do in order to resource, to resource that appropriately. Because I think the current system is, is very challenged if you just have a non-medical person trying to classify low to no acuity calls. It's very difficult to tell, so we want to put eyes on the patient, we send resources. I think we have, we really need to transition to a sustainable model where we attempt to get a little bit more detail about what's going on. And that means changing expectations back to the mitigation piece, meaning that when you call 911, you may not get an ambulance. You may get a nurse, you may get an Uber or Lyft ride to the hospital. So I think this is something that is evidence-based, patient-focused, as we mentioned. The last part, and I put that there last to be purposely, is that I think if you look at jurisdictions of similar size, for example, Detroit, DC, St. Louis, given our utilization rate, which I know Chief Matt said was a UHU of up to 60%, that is also not sustainable. So at some point, we need to pull that panic button and have a relief valve. Where just like if you've had a major disaster and we have critical units that would be staffed by, let's say, non-traditionally EMS providers, there is a certain component where we need to have an additional service or the ability to deploy additional trucks on the road. I hesitate from saying that is a solution, but again, the system also needs to have the ability to respond to the increased need that we have demonstrated time and time again. So I certainly don't want to belabor that point, but you know, in my world where I deal with the interface between the patients that need care, the fire department that needs to provide the care, and the ED that is tasked with providing the definitive care, I think we've shown a couple of situations in which we can deal with the statistics and mitigate them a little bit more effectively. So we may not be able to prevent all the 911 calls that come in from the top five neighborhoods, but when they come in, I'm hoping we'll be able to serve the patient population and the caller population in a little bit more of an informed manner by getting them the resources they need.
Dr. Lawner, if I could piggyback behind you too, just on this bottom line. Early in the pandemic in 2020, we were kind of innovative and we reached out and put on some commercial surge units to give us a little more capability. I just want to let you know we're actively doing that again to be able to give us a little bit of that relief valve that Dr. Lawner was just discussing here. And then the last slide was the alternative transport, and that's what Dr. Lawner had talked about. Of course, we have ALS units, BLS units, multi-personager vans, wheelchair vans, Uber, Lyft or taxi is also an option. Mr. Chair, I just left the two recruitment slides in here. I don't know if you want these as standing slides or you want, because we're, we're in continuous with that right now. Do you want these, you know, quarter to quarter, or are you just going to drop them out unless it's relevant?
I think we have a separate LO to discuss recruitment, so we can, we can skip over the recruitment piece. And I really want to thank you guys for putting the time in to think about all these different pieces. I'm going to open the floor to questions from the committee. I've got two, two very simple ones, and I'm sure we can answer these very quickly. In our, in our last meeting, I, I asked about CityStat and if we were using metrics from CityStat, what CityStat metrics we were using at the time? We weren't using anything from CityStat? Or you guys said you were going to look to find what metrics we were using in the past? Were you able to get that information?
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, most of the metrics that we really reported on historically were, I mean, I mean, we can report and give you the call volume because it's going to tell you we're a really busy system. I think we need to look more granular, some of the things that Dr. Lawner is talking about. How are we doing with offload? We've read the facets report that said, if I get, have our offload to 30 minutes, it's equivalent to six more units. We, we've got to start making some moves in those directions. The hospitals are finally starting to accept the fact that we control the narrative on the units. And trust me, it was not an easy, I'm not getting any Christmas cards at the hospitals right now, I can't tell you a lie, but they, they kind of accepted it. We're trying to work hand in hand with them. I, I, you know, we admitted that we're not just coming in and just, you know, arbitrarily dropping people, but that there has to be an answer for us to be able to answer. Our mission is to the citizens of Baltimore, not to augment the hospital's shortness in staff and personnel. So, so I would say yes on that. I could pull them out, but honestly, most of the numbers were driven around numbers, to be honest with Mr. Chair.
I think the metrics focused around three major things. One thing was call volume, another thing was response time, and I think the last was turnaround time in hospital. I would argue, just, just like anything else, I think, not saying those are unimportant. I think we should evolve and, and look at other things. Because we, there needs to be a focus on, on population health and, and getting ahead of the call in the first place. And that's what Dr. Ben, and, and, and I will add, I'm going to go to a different component on, on, on this, Mr. Chair. One, we meet, we meet every week to talk about our metrics and talk about how to improve what we're doing and how to get the word out, not just to the community, but also to our members, because they need to be encouraged to know that we're paying attention to this and we're trying to resolve it. But one of the things Dr. Ben continuously brings us back around to, because he has a 360 degree view of what's going on. He said, we can't just raise Cain with the hospital, hospitals, without coming up with our end of the solutions, because we are part of the problem. So that's, that's part of what we're working on population health. We're looking at, looking at the historical responses. When you pick up the call and call 911, you get an ambulance. Well, that may not be so in the future. In fact, I would argue it's not going to be so in the future of Baltimore. We're going to have to, we've got to reinvent ourselves. We do not have a choice. We're, for lack of a better word, we're broken and we have to change. We have to change. In this situation, like I said, we increased ambulances by 30% and we, we are actually in a worse situation now than we were in there then. So increasing just ambulance is not the answer. We are, we are looking at a holistic view and, and, and we've developed a five-year plan, but I want to, I want to add context to that as well. We created a five-year plan in, in, in the department before, and within two years, we had to navigate away from it because circumstances and everything changed so much. So whatever we put in place, it has to be a living document where we continuously evaluate whether or not we're getting what we get, what we're going to get. Or if the dynamics have shifted beneath us and we're still running with the same plan. In other words, there's a new memo out and we hadn't read and adjusted to it. So that, that's the last portion I'd, I'd like to add to this. We, we got to, we got to belly up to the bar and we have to be a part of this solution.
Yeah, Chief Ford, I appreciate that. I think I'm really glad to hear, and you mentioned this before, you guys are meeting weekly. I think that's a really important step. I think it's also really important to continue to think about the metrics that give us a sense for the health of our operations. And I, I still think whether or not we want to focus on these metrics or other metrics are more suited for what we're trying to accomplish as a department or as an EMS service. I think, you know, totally up to the experts, you guys. I, I do think it is helpful, one, for, for us to kind of keep our eye on the prize. And if that needs to change, the prize needs to change. I'm, I'm with you on that, whatever that may mean. We're so totally willing to figure out what that is. But it also helps keep us, the council, apprised of what you're focused on so that we can be talking about the same issue the same way, for the same reasons. Clearly, you guys have really, really done a lot of work to understand some of the problems that lead to where we are today. And I think that's an important first step. But as you know, ideas don't mean anything unless you have the follow-through. And so making sure that we can continually take the insights that, that Dr. Lawner has alluded to and figure out plans that help us systematically address these issues over time, both within our own system and also with the hospitals and also upstream, as I alluded to with the health department and the way that we roll out various resources in, in our neighborhoods, in our top 10 neighborhoods, which we touched on. One of the things from the presentation that completely shocked me was when we were going through the top 10 box areas, the difference between the, the neighborhood with the most calls and neighborhood with the second most calls was to a factor of 10 in many instances. So these are hyper, hyper, hyper-focused issues that we, we know are happening in the same areas quarter after quarter, year in, year out. And so I think, one, having those weekly meetings is very important. Two, having a sense for how these metrics are impacting our operations, whether it's the three, call volume, response time in a hospital time, or others, I think are important. But just, I do think we, we want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to leverage data in our decision-making, because as you, as you alluded to, it's changing every day, especially with COVID. We don't know what's around the corner. So really appreciate you guys. Once again, I thought, I found this really, really helpful and I hope the council, the committee did as well. Any other questions from the committee? Hold on one second, I can't see anybody. Any other questions from the committee? All right, seeing no further questions, we're going to go into recess. And I, once again, I want to thank you, Chief Ford, Chief Matt, Dr. Lawner, just for giving us a lot of insight and clearly putting a lot of time into figuring this out. I look forward to our next, next meeting next quarter. Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
Mr. Chair, thank you, council, for your time. Much appreciated.